Our Father and Goddess, once again, that you have allowed us to assemble in this place. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We ask the Father of all that we shall say and do with pleasing and acceptably in your sight. Bless all those of God that is in this chamber. Bless, oh Lord, all our efforts that we do to be good stewards for the things you have planned our hands to do. Let's pray in our Son Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. This day in history, on August twenty-second seventeen seventy-six, the British arrived at Long Island. During William Hall, large army came to Long Island, hoping to capture New York City and gain control of the Hudson River. A victory that would divide the rebellious colonies in half. Five days later, on August twenty-seventh, the Red Coast marched against the sacred position at Brooklyn Heights, overcoming the Americans at Carwinus Pass, and then outflanking the entire continent of the army. The British captured New York City on September fifteenth, and it will remain in the British hands until the end of the war. Fact of the day.
All right, just need to read this decorum statement for everyone. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Alpaca. Please all turn off or silence all cell phones. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address, record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections, as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, fire leaders may be removed from the council chambers. Okay. Now, we've got approval minutes. Look for motion approval minutes, is ready? Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. General review?
No changes.
No changes, all right. Presentation, Cliff, I guess this is your... And we also have in the, in the house with us, we appreciate Misty Taylor, where is Misty? Ah, yes, Misty Taylor's here. It's a backup to Cliff Shepherd, this is kind of her expertise, so...
That's why she should be the front up, not the backup. But at any rate, okay, so, I've been asked to present to council a proposal for you all to consider and let us know whether you wish to proceed forward. This is kind of the first step of alerting you to the process if you're not aware of it. Emerson Park, which is a relatively large subdivision within the city, has had private roads since its creation, and those roads are not in the best of shape. Because they're private roads, issues of assessments, collecting of assessments and getting them in the shape that they should be has been problematic, and these roads, so I am told, are also now used to access other areas, not just Emerson Park. For that reason, they have asked the city to consider taking over these roads, ownership and maintenance of them going into the future. In order to do that, we were asked to determine what mechanism could be used in order to get the roads up to city standards, so that if we were to take them over, how we could do that and get them in good shape in advance without costing the city money. The way to do that, after consulting with us Taylor and others, is to go through a special assessment. So, on the screen in front of you is a memorandum, a brief memorandum outlining the steps for a special assessment. Basically, you identify the benefit, in this case, the roads, most of which will be the public roads, which we will be responsible for, but also, within this subdivision, there are some alleyways. So, the special assessment that we're talking about will include both things, but we will only be responsible, if I understand correctly, the proposal for the, the public roads, not the alleyways, but they will all have to be fixed at the same time, as a part of a construction contract. What is, the procedure would be, first, to identify the benefit in terms of how it should be allocated amongst the homeowners. What do I mean by that? In the benefit situation, you have to determine, okay, this specific benefit that's going to this specific area, how much accrues to an individual homeowner? And so, do you charge more if a home is bigger? Do you charge more if a home has more road fringe than some other homes? That's all part of the calculus to come up with a method for figuring out what the assessment would be per home. Could it be the same assessment for each lot? It could be, but, but we don't determine that, meaning the lawyers don't. That's put to experts who help come up with analysis that they can defend in court as this is a fair way to apportion amongst the homeowners their proportionate share of, of the cost of the assessment. The city went then through what's been suggested, although this mechanism may change, would get a temporary construction easement, which would automatically, with no further action, once the work is completed and accepted by the city, be turned into a deed of right-of-way for the roads, so that we would then own them and go take them forward. That's an important part of the transaction, which Ms. Taylor can explain, because if we don't own it, we can't assess on it and we can't fix it. And so, that's kind of the way that goes. In terms of the method of financing, whether it'll be a bank loan or something else, I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor address that. But for anybody who's concerned here from the subdivision, there are hearings, notices, opportunities to be heard on this issue, whether you're for or against it. And then, later, the council will decide yes or no to go forward. And that will include everything I've mentioned. It will include okaying the idea of taking over the roads, okaying the assessment and the mechanism for collection through the property tax rolls, and the payment term, whether it'll be over a twenty-year period, a twenty-five-year period, a fifteen-year period. All of that will be part of what you all will decide, based on, for example, the proposal for financing that you get, the interest rates that are available. Obviously, all these costs get passed on the, to the homeowners, but you're looking for the best overall deal and get what you need. As I understand it, but I'm no expert on this, the cost is restfully three million, is what we're talking about, to do all of the work that's required. Once that's done, if you've ever, ever paid a tax assessment, and we all have, you know you get the bill, and this would be just another line item for those particular homeowners of the special assessment, some amount per assessment. Again, not yet known, but will be known when we, if we go down further down this process. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Obviously, we assume, because we were asked to do this, this has generally, what, the good support from the community? Could be wrong, but I think that's accurate. I spoke today to the HOA's attorney, and she seems to think that's accurate. And so, unless you have any more questions for me, I can let Ms. Taylor come and explain the bank loan or other possible finance process.
Come on up.
Hi, for the record, Misty Taylor with Bryant Miller Olive, we're bond counsel to the city. I think Mr. Shepherd did a very good job of explaining how it works. Basically, the special assessment would become a special revenue stream for the city that you can sort of monetize or use as a credit stream for a loan to finance these roadway improvements. As Mr. Shepherd, Shepherd mentioned, in order for us to do all of that on a tax-exempt basis, which means a lower interest rate versus a taxable basis, the city needs to own or have some type of ownership interest in the roads. And so, in order to not have the chicken and egg situation, we're, we came up with the construction easement such that when the roadway is completed, improvements have been accepted, the city would then own the roads. So, the assessment would be just for these initial improvements. My understanding is these roads would then become part of the city's portfolio of roadways, and you would maintain them going forward. So, it's a one-time assessment to the homeowners to get them from where they are to where they need to be, and then going forward, they would contribute like any other city resident for city roads. That's kind of the summary of, of what we've discussed so far, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, I've got, I've got one that, so, just for the, I guess, more for the homeowners than for us is, if, we'll say that they put twenty-five percent down and financed seventy-five percent of that, and it's, it's on a tax-free basis, what kind of rate would you think on twenty years that would... I know I hate putting you on the spot, but...
Well, I can't say. You all have a financial advisor, Mr. Tindall, with, yeah, Hilltop Securities. He works with you all on your, your debt and whatnot. So, Joel probably has a better understanding too, and it probably depends on the term of the loan, whether it's a fifteen-year loan or a twenty-year loan.
Come on down.
With a project of this size, it's, it's more right for a bank loan, which is where we, we seek proposals from banks to provide the loan at a certain interest rate and certain provisions. And I think, you know, it depends on the bank's appetite for how long you can go out with those assessments, Joel. Of course, Joel doesn't have a crystal ball either, but I'm sure he has a better idea.
Good evening, Joel Tindall, Hilltop Securities. We serve as a financial advisor to the city. Again, like Misty mentioned, it, it depends on the term. Generally, the bank financing, you're looking at maybe a fifteen-year term, maybe a little bit longer at the most. If you're, if you're trying to finance a long, for over a longer period, it probably lends itself more towards a bond issue, but in that kind of fifteen to, let's call it twenty at the most, but that would be kind of stretching it on the bank side. Could be plus or minus five percent, but we really haven't gotten into the, the credit specifically here. So, that means it could be higher or lower, depending on the specifics of the subdivision.
Now, one of the things we would, we discussed was the, that the city... Somebody need to explain that to the, to the crowd here, that the, where the city is backing the loan, but does it affect our bonding capacity? Can you talk about that? Is that, that would be you, Misty, I guess?
Yeah, so, if the city was to issue debt in the form of a note or a bond, whatever we call it, it's, it's really the same thing. That you have to have a security for the repayment of that. So, in this instance, for example, it would just be the special assessment. So, you would consider that self-sufficient debt. You know, that revenue stream should be matched to the debt service, and it should just be coming in and going out to pay the, to pay your lender. And what we probably don't know at this point is, is this a, a well enough credit to lend itself to a bank loan? Sometimes you may have to have a backup from the city, like a covenant to budget and appropriate, it would be a backup. But the, the idea would be to not have to provide that and just have the, the special assessment be the only thing securing... And it would not, there would not ever be an obligation on the city to levy, add the lawnmower taxes or anything of that nature, and those are all disclaimers that we put in the documents that the holder can't compel you to do that, because it's not a general obligation, it's a revenue bond.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting that. I'm sorry, I'm not understanding that. I mean, we're gonna be holding the debt for Emerson Park. And we're talking about three million dollars, is that, is that what we've committed to, or that you've committed?
Committed anything, yeah.
No? I, you know, I don't know. You had a, a meeting with the mayor, I know, right after the last council meeting. So, I don't know what took place in that discussion and how this is coming to us today as a presentation. So, you can just kind of bring us up to date with that, why did this?
So, I'm F Troop, and this is the cavalry. I, I called in the cavalry. The question was, what are the mechanisms by which we, the city, could help Emerson Park get its roads up to speed, so we could take them over? And we went through several methodologies and found that special assessment is the best way to do that. What happens then is, the lenders that they will seek, I don't know who it'll be, will understand, they will look at what we're presenting. This is backed by assessments. Apparently, it's a better rated debt if it's backed by assessments that are collected to the general method of taxes, because everybody's familiar with how you pay your taxes, and they generally get paid. And so, with that being the situation, that's the best, easiest, and the sum that, although a lot for the average person, relative to municipal deals, it's a small deal. And so, the bank will look at the role of assessments, how many people it will be spread over and for what length of time, and they will assign it, based on all of those things, a rate, plus or minus five percent is a good guess. And it is backed, the, the collateral is the assessment, because if you don't pay the assessment, then it becomes a lien on your house, the same way it would be if you don't pay your taxes. So, people are generally motivated to pay that debt, which is why it's highly rated. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's how we landed on a special assessment and the mechanism.
Versus an HOA loan, which probably couldn't even get done.
The alternative for the HOA would be to go out and get their own financing, which would almost assuredly be significantly higher in interest rate if they could qualify. Now, I understand that this HOA has some decent money put away, but that is for reserves for other things that are expenses of the association, but they have committed to put in, I want to say a half million, six hundred thousand, something like that, towards paying the initial debt down. So, if it's, if the three million dollars is number is correct, and I don't know if it is, but that means that the actual loan would be somewhere around two point four, and then you take it from there.
Okay, because when I had the agenda review with our finance director, I understand that the HOA has a night, has a healthy reserve, something like one point five million.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that they did, and again, this is information I got from their treasurer in various email form. They're willing to put, I think, six hundred thousand or so towards this project, the remainder of which they use for doing the other things the association has to do. I don't know what that means, I assume it means paying a management company, maintaining the sidewalks, retention, I don't know what all else, insurance and so forth. But, but yes, of that one point six roughly, there, I think they're committed to put about six hundred thousand in it.
And the more they put into it, the lower their assessment will be, at the end of the day, yeah.
So, who's going to manage this assessment?
Well, if, if you're asking about managing, who does anything? The beauty of this, of the regular collection method through the tax assessment is, once we have it in place, a tax roll is created, and it becomes an automatic part of the bill for the set period of time. We pass the, the resolutions that we have to pass, we send a copy to the tax assessor, they then put it on the rolls, based on the amount we say per lot or per home, whatever, however the calculation comes out. And basically, that's how it goes. Now, if you're saying, okay, what if somebody doesn't pay that portion of their taxes? Well, there's a whole process of liens and potentially even foreclosure. Will it happen? I don't know, maybe, maybe even probably, but it's hard to imagine that you would lose your home over what will be, relatively speaking, a small debt compared to your property taxes and other things that are, you know, are on there every year, when you pay them anyway. Now, having said that, the, the collection of the debt is, whatever is collected is gonna go to, to pay us if we pay the bank or pay the bank directly, and I'm not sure, that's some detail I haven't figured out yet. But either we will collect the money, send it to the bank, or we will pay the loan as it comes, and we will take the money to pay ourselves back. I'm not sure, again, how that's gonna all fall out in the Washington, maybe Misty or Joel knows, but at the end of the day, that's the mechanism. If you, you said, well, do we have to do any of this? No, that's what we're talking about now. If you say, you know what, we'd love, just as soon have them keep their roads, it's okay. We're just telling you how you can do it, if you choose to do it.
So, I got Lance, let Lance kind of talk about the process, the city.
Right.
Okay. And we do have special assessments already that we manage. So, this would be incorporated with the other special assessments, it's something that we have to manage in, on an annual basis. And the debt will come up, become a part of our debt portfolio.
Sort of like the streetlight assessments, same, be the same, exact same thing.
Yeah, so, it would be incorporated with the other special assessments that we have, and then the debt will be incorporated in our debt portfolio.
So, none of that, so this arrangement would not affect our, you know, we wanted a bond? Because we have a lot of special, we have big capital projects that are coming up. So, is this in any way going to impact that?
I guess it depends on how it's structured. I think Misty kind of explained, if we have to do some type of guarantee, it could have some impact, you know, in regards to our debt capacity. I know we have something like a ten million dollar limit or whatever. So, potentially, it can, it depends on how it is structured. Hopefully, it does not, but it all depends. We have to go out and probably do an RFP solicit to the banks to see if we can get the best rate for this effort. But I do want to clarify, the six hundred included the alleyways, right? Yeah, and so, the alleyways is about, based on the last estimate, that was about seven hundred thousand. So, the outside of the alleyways is three million dollars.
So, without the alleyway?
No, no, I think, I, it was my understanding, I could be wrong, that the three million is everything.
That's excluding the alleyways. It was three point seven.
I'm not a construction manager, and I didn't sleep on Holiday and Express.
This is public services cost, that estimates that they gave in June. It was three point seven million dollars, and the alleyway is about seven hundred and some thousand dollars.
And the alleyways cannot be financed?
No, they're supposed to cover the cost of the alleyways.
So, it, so you're saying altogether, alleyways and the roads is three point seven million? We're talking about now?
Yes, that's, that was what Dio presented back in June. I just want to clarify, so the amount outside of the alleyways is three million.
We do have HOA representatives in here that may have different numbers or something that's slightly different, because we've been getting different numbers, so I want to make sure that we're talking about consistently having the same numbers. I'm not saying you're wrong or right, I'm just saying, I want to make sure.
These are public services numbers, yeah.
I understand. It's just, we, we have a couple of different numbers going on here.
We're gonna have everybody up here at the podium here before it's all said and done.
So, it's three point seven with alleyways.
She, she's gonna...
That was from the...
Hello! Um, so, it's a total of three million.
Name and address.
I'm Jennifer, we're president of Emerson Park, and this is Dave, treasurer of Emerson Park. So, the total, the last total that we were given, and this is just an estimate, we actually have to get the three bids and find out what the cost would be, but they're estimating a total of three million inclusive of the alleyways. The alleyways are around four hundred and fifty, four hundred and forty thousand, and we're gonna put up six hundred thousand out of our reserves. The remainder of the reserves belong to the town homeowners, because they, it covers their insurance, it covers their roof replacements, painting, and other exterior things that we do, as well as the pool, the clubhouse. So, that is how much we can put up, is the six hundred. So, that does cover the alleyways plus additional towards the roads.
Commissioner Anderson, you got any questions?
I do, so there's currently a new builder, this building in there currently now, correct?
He, they are not part of Emerson Park at all.
Even though they have the Emerson Park, and they're not part of Emerson Park?
Yes, they have taken on the name of residents at Emerson Park, but they are a completely separate entity.
Okay, in addition to that, so, a few things. For the special assessment per home, who's responsible to pay for that special assessment? That is needed to determine, that's probably a question.
The homeowners.
The homeowners, yeah.
The homeowners will be assessed on their property tax bill.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, not right now.
Mr. Smith?
All right, so, now him, the three million dollars is inclusive for the alleyways, but I thought the city was only gonna take over the roads. So, the alleyways will remain property of Emerson Park. Now, since the new development is not a part of Emerson Park, but they need to use your roadways in order to get to the development, how does that work?
So, we have a special road assessment with them, which will have to be reevaluated after this, and we will bill them for Alston Bay, which is the, the only portion of roadway that they have accessibility to. So, we will bill them after we find out what the cost of just Alston Bay is to repair, and then receive those funds back from them. So, will not be the city's responsibility.
Should the city decide not to take ownership of the roads? What is your backup plan?
We, we got an estimate of what we could do with two point five at a ten-year rate. It would bankrupt us. We could not afford to bill all of our homeowners a special assessment, which would be on a monthly basis. We would not be able to do that. It would be a monthly payment of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
All right, to, what, what's?
Misty?
Yeah, Misty, you made a statement that hopefully that we wouldn't have to put up anything that this was standardization, when we know which way it would go.
Right, and Joel could probably speak more to this, but what, what would happen is, if you decide to move forward, when we get to the point in time where we need to do so, we would put out a request for proposals from banks. We would draft that the way we want it, meaning without any guarantees from the city or backup city credit. And if we don't get any bids, then we know it's not credit-worthy, and we'll have to go back to the drawing board, so... But again, the council would have, you know, opportunities along the way to authorize that. But, the, the goal would be to go with just the special assessment as the, as the revenue, as the credit.
Mr. Nesta?
Yes, appreciate your time and all that, and HOA, thank you for being here as well. Couple of different process questions, I guess, I have a procedural ease, and we've kind of discussed it, and Commissioner Smith also referenced it as well. I, I, I just find it, I would imagine that any banker lender would want us at the backstop for a payment. I, I just don't see it happening otherwise. For this, I know to your point that you just said, we don't know yet. But again, we got to function as worst-case scenario. So, if we don't get the revenue we need to make the payment, we would still have to take that out of our... We would still, it would still be our name that's paying the bill every month for, to the bank, to the lender, correct? So, it's still on our tax, it's still on our budget item that I'm gonna have to account for every year.
Yes, it would be our debt. We're, we're gonna do the solicitation, this is gonna be city debt, it's just being funded by that special assessment. And therefore, I think this will be our contract, the city contract, not the bids. So, I think that's where Dio got his numbers from.
Understood.
With the three point seven.
Okay.
Just want to be clear.
No, understood, thank you. And, and again, I mean, prices are changing daily, so it, it's all over the place. Who knows where that's sitting right now, either way? And in the process of, I know we're saying that there's the backstop of, of, we could lien the property or foreclose on it, whatever that looks like. It wouldn't be the HOA doing that, that would be us, correct, that we would have to go through that process?
So, the, the process is, you, you would collect this assessment pursuant to the uniform method of collection, just like, as Blanche mentioned, you currently collect your assessments. When you're on the tax roll, you know, there's certain laws, you know, you can't partially pay your taxes. You have to pay all or nothing. If you don't pay your taxes, there's the tax certificate sale process. So, that's the backstop when you're on the uniform collection method. So, foreclosure wouldn't really be the way you... So foreclosure wouldn't really be, uh, the way you go, you go through the tax certificate sale process.
Okay. And then, I mean, timeline wise for this, if we were to move forward, we'd be pretty far out for, I mean, this is going to take some time, correct? Six months to, to?
As stated in our briefings, the next time that we can get on the tax roll is July of twenty twenty five.
You did say that, thank you.
Yes.
Reminded me.
Yes, so we got a gap here that we need to deal with as well.
Okay. Uh, I think that's all my questions, thank you.
So, so Blanche, just, I mean, I mean, I don't see the, the credit risk as, you know, as a, as a real big hurdle. I mean, I, I would look at, um, one of the neighborhoods that we had, they had a wall that they were placed on Main, on Main Street with an E on the end, that we have the wall, um, assessment. Uh, that's on the, it's on the, the tax. And it's a much lower neighborhood than Emerson Park.
Correct.
And I don't, and we've had that in place for longer than I've been mayor, so ten years, and we've never had a problem there, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so I, I mean, I, I think we have to put the risk out there. We can't, you know, we got it, can't do it in a, in a vacuum, but I don't think it's, it's a, a, a real serious issue, because we do have, their house is, is, is collateral. I mean, their house is collateral for that, that loan, every one of them. So, I mean, and so here we got houses that are in the, I'm gonna say one fifty price range that have not had a problem at all in the last ten years, whatever that is. I, I just don't see the, the risk now, we don't want to, and I don't know whether, I think we, we made the loan on that one. I don't, I don't even know.
If any loan, it would be like the general fund refunded.
Right.
You know, and then it pays it back.
And probably all, if, maybe, well, I think what I want to do is probably see where we are as a council. Um, and if we want to move forward, looking at making this thing work, I would, I would suggest to you, or I will bring back to you, that, that Main Street is, is a perfect example of how this could work and how it has worked, not just could.
For that, that was the abandoned neighborhood or something like that, Mayor?
No, it, it's, I don't, they had a fence and they wanted a, like a, one of those vinyl walls.
Okay, okay.
It's right there across from, from, from the high school.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was on the commission when they did that wall.
Okay.
So it's the same.
It's the same, uh, process.
Did we get debt for that, though?
Oh, it's a small.
I don't know how, I know we got, they, they pay it.
But did we just lend our own money to that, or did we get debt for it?
I don't know.
I have to go back and look at the history of that, because of course I wasn't here. But what I have been told, um, by Chuck, who used to administer the special assessments, that they borrow money and it's small, it probably was ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars from the general fund. And then it pays it back with the assessment.
Okay, so we're not, that's, it's a little bit different on that.
Yeah, that's the, this is not millions.
Right.
I'm talking, yeah, small dollar amounts, but that's the process.
Right, but much, much lower value houses, so I mean, people that are struggling to, you know, to make ends meet. So I mean, it's different, you know, so if they haven't, my, my, I guess my point is if they're not having a problem with, you know, they, obviously a much more, um, economical neighborhood than Emerson Park, then I would leave me to believe that we should be okay.
Yeah.
I mean, but anyway, so I, I guess, is anything, any other questions? If not, I just.
Let me ask one last question. Should we do this, and we're talking about a fifteen to twenty year loan, what's the life of the road? Is it going to need repair again before the loan is paid back? And then how is that going to be financed?
Well, it, it falls in the same category as the other city on streets. And I think, you know, the challenge is there. We discussed it at the workshop, you're proposing an increase in the village to support maintaining the city on streets as they are. So we're trying to get another permanent revenue source. I know the mayor, you mentioned if the sales tax goes through for Orange County. But right now that street fund is suffering.
Can we walk through the process really quick, or there's the, the pros and cons between bank loan versus bonding?
Misty?
Or Joel?
This is probably a joint effort question.
Um, so the process of going out into the public market with debt is you generally need to go to the rating agencies and get a rating. Um, and in this case, it would probably be, you know, based on the assessment alone, unless the city does give a credit backup, because the city probably is or has a rating. I don't know how long it's been since you've been in the public markets, but, um, it would look at this, you know, assessment. You would have to prepare an offering memorandum to potential investors. Um, and it's just a little more convoluted process. Whereas with a bank loan, you solicit bids from the banks, the banks come to you with their proposal, and you do not have to prepare an offering document, it's unrated debt. You don't have to go to the rating agencies. And if, and the, and the other nice thing it, with bank loans is if you ever want to amend the documents or make changes to your loan structure, you're dealing with one relationship bank instead of multiple bondholders and that, that own five thousand dollar increments of that debt.
Let, let me add too, that the expense of that debt is substantially greater than getting a bank loan. And all of those costs, whether it's the bank loan or floated debt, are going to be rolled into the cost of the issue. So you may save something on interest by floating public debt if you can float it at this level, but you'll probably lose it on the cost of.
Cost of issuance, you have more with the offering.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I think we've kind of exhausted any, any last additional questions? If not, I just, just want to get a, you know, kind of a feel for, do we move forward or, or we?
So when, when moving forward, what would be the next step for the HOA at this point?
I guess we would need, um, direction from council if you want us to pursue this. Um, we'd need a vote, and if you want us to go out and solicit the financing for it as well. We do have some contracts, again, already in place.
So are, are you, all your residents in Emerson Park on board for this? I mean, they're, they're willing to accept the assessments of their home and, and pay that extra assessment?
Right, so the agreement, uh, the votes came in and it was, uh, ninety something percent were in favor. Out of the five hundred homes, we had close to four hundred of them vote. And out of that, the ninety something percent were at a yes for the assessment on their taxes and having the city take the roads.
But we don't know what that assessment amount is, right? And I, that was what's kind of in here, is that we don't know if townhomes are going to be at a lesser rate than what homes that have bigger frontage and, and.
Right.
So there's a, a, a kind of a interesting formula that we're going to create here to figure out who pays what.
Exactly. So who does that, who does?
It's in-house, we'll be working together in-house to do it.
Whose department does that?
It's I'm now to do that.
Use, it would be Chuck, but you know, Chuck and I work together, so.
Okay.
It all depends on the cost, it all depends on the cost.
I did like rough math, it was like three to five hundred dollars per home for you.
Divided by the five hundred.
Correct, yeah, for twenty years, that's a twenty year term, but again, that's on, there's so many variables into that, so.
Just a lot of variables, we got to get the actual cost, you got, you don't know, we don't know what the interest rate is going to be. We don't know if any closing costs are going to be, we don't know what the fees are, all of that's got to be factored, total cost. And then you come back and make that determination, timing, everything.
So, so does it cost us anything to get an actual cost as to what is your own cost to do this work?
Uh, I, again, I have to get updated cost from Dio, this was his presentation he gave to this council in June.
Right, that's what I'm asking, is there a cost for us to get that cost?
It shouldn't be, because we have contractors. It, we would rely on our engineers for this estimate. It would be a city contract and we rely on them, and we do have contractors already on the contract. So I'm assuming that they base this estimate on, on those contractors.
I can just add here, there will be, to the point that you guys are kind of dancing around, a go-no-go point. Right now, we're not at the go-no-go except to find out the information you need to get to that point. But there will be a point when you're presented with, as well as the whole community, all of the facts, the costs, the interest, the amount of assessment, how it's going to be done, and then it will be up to you to vote yea, up or down. So to answer the unanswered question, there's an expense in getting to the answer of how much it's going to cost. And that's really where we are today, is do you want us to go down the road and continue to try to gather the information so you get to the no-go part? You can always say no at that point, but right now, in terms of the answers we can give you, this is about what we got.
Yeah, we're, we're just really dealing in concept now. It, it, are we for against the concept? And then if we, you know, because we've got to look at the financing side, a, a more, um, accurate, uh, cost for the, the road improvements. And so those, those two pieces, then, and probably we'd have to go back to the, to the, the members of the HOA. Are you still on board? It went from three oh seven to three fourteen or, you know, to three sixty five, you know, a year or so. I mean, but I just, yeah, so I'm just, you know, if, 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 if we're not comfortable doing it, then let's, we'll, you know, let them kind of figure out their own way. If, if we want to try to help them, that's, that's kind of where we're at. Obviously, there's a couple more steps to go, but I mean, I just want to, we either move forward and try to come up with a solution or, or we just leave them to their own.
Attorney Shepherd, have you done this anywhere else with any of your other municipalities?
Special assessments, yes, absolutely. Not for, not for these roads or this subdivision or something like it, but yes, you do special assessments for things like, um, sidewalks in a community that wants them, doesn't have them, and weren't supposed to have them.
More specifically, a road, private roads being turned into public roads.
Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, private roads, usually it's the, what the process you're going through now, that, that the people decided, oh, I really don't want private roads because it's expensive, and they would like somebody else to take it over, so you go through this routine. But more frequently, it's stuff like, we'd like sidewalks, well, your developer didn't put them in, well, we'd like them, how can we pay for them? Okay, well, here's a mechanism you can pay for them, you're getting a special benefit, we'll help you out, but you got to pay all the cost of us helping you out. Do you really want it? If they say yes, they really want it, then we go down the road. I did it in Eldora, done it in Maitland, uh, and it's, it is, it's all kinds of things like this. It, sometimes it can be for fixing up retention ponds where they haven't put enough money into it. So it's, it's basically anything that's a special benefit to a community that doesn't benefit the entire city at large. And it's a way of making them pay their share of those costs, but also making those costs more affordable than they would be without the city's help.
And we've seen that, we have our MSBU's either through lighting districts or, or what have you, same thing with our wastewater, or not wastewater, um, the ponds like you'd said. Why aren't we doing an MSBU for this, or why can't we?
That's what it is.
So it's same, but just structured a little different?
Technically, that's what it is.
Attorney Shepherd, do you have an example that we could see a contractor, or just kind of?
I'm sure I can find one, I don't have it off the top of my head, but having done this for almost forty years now, I'm sure I can find one, I just don't know it.
Something on a larger scale, where the city is loaning, just to, where we can really see the nuts and bolts of how this breaks down.
Yes, sir.
Um, without wasting too much staff time, too much of, uh, cost, things like that, I think that'll be valuable.
And I'm saying that because of previous conversations with, um, with Chuck, that, that's basically what it is, an MSBU.
Okay, so we're back to, it's the pleasure of the board.
Well, according to our city attorney, if we move forward and we put out the RFP, we still have an opportunity in the process. If we're not comfortable with this, that we can say, you know, we can either continue. I'm, I'm just concerned with.
Well, it's going to take work to get the RFP out, it's, you know, we'll have to work with our financial advisors and get, you know, procurement to get RFP out for this loan, it's going to take some work. Uh, it's, 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 it's up to you, I mean, basically we've discussed, this is the funding mechanism, if this is what you want to do, you know, this is how we can potentially do it, it's going to cost, we're going to make sure that that assessment covers all of that cost. We may have to guarantee it, we may not have to guarantee it, depends on the institution and what their requirements are. Again, it's, it's up to you, I mean, do you want to bring on a private road in the current situation that you're in, you know?
And we, we're already having an issue with our street fund where we don't have enough funds to take care of our existing roads and streets. And that's a concern.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the no-go, the go-no-go point, if you look at the outline, is five, legislative approval. Everything up till that is, you can stop. After that, when you pass the ordinance, if you get through the second reading of the resolution, then it's just down to creating the assessment role, collecting the assessment, and, uh, you know, off you go. Once that's, once you're at that point, then you've got the money, you've got the contract ready to go, you've got a contractor ready to build, uh, fix, do whatever needs to be done, and that's the go. So everything up to number five is where you can back out.
So the, on number four, you do realize that that will happen next year?
Oh, absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It, none of this happens right away, but right now, the question is, do we do any of this?
Right.
That's what.
Okay, just note that, number four, the public hearings and the notices, that's next year, twenty twenty five.
I, I mean, I, I think we're just looking at, or I'm looking at the concept. If you don't like the concept, it doesn't matter what the numbers are, then let's, let's, you know, cut it off. If you, if it's, if it's just about, you know, the process, you know, if, if you're okay with the process and how the, how the, it looks, then we move to the next step. And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to hold them up, and I don't want to hold us up if we're not serious about moving forward with, with the plan. If we're not, that, that's obviously this council's decision.
Exactly.
Well, I think, at least my concern is that, you know, we have plenty of private streets within the, our municipality right now, and are we setting a precedent that we, we let all gated communities or all private road communities, we give them a, a free ability to, to get a, get a loan from us? That's my concern, I had the same discussion with the HOA on that.
I can answer that question. It is a, and I, I want to be careful about how I say, it is a political precedent, it is not a legal precedent.
No, I understand, understood, absolutely. And that's, we discussed that, I discussed that with the HOA, I discussed it with the staff, is that it's similar to what we do with acrylic estates. There's no precedent setting, it's just, do we want to help out a community that's in need or not, so.
I just wanted to clarify, the roads are private, but have always been public for fourteen years because the developer never installed the gates. And we did not find out that our roads were even private and we needed to save for them until twenty seventeen, when the Greystone Rehab Center started to build at the front of our community, and then they said they had rights to our private roads. So from two thousand seven until twenty fourteen, there was no saving for the roads from the builder, and the HOA had no idea that we were supposed to be saving. So this is why we're in this predicament, somebody, somewhere down the line did not make sure this builder protected your citizens.
So is it possible to go back and sue the developer because it didn't put up the gate?
I'm sure it would be a very costly thing to do. I don't know. We're just residents asking for help.
All right, I'm looking for some direction, obviously it's, it's, I'll vote to approve, but, but I don't, also don't want to give them a, if, if there's no, no future, then I don't want to give them a false sense of, of hope either. So I'm looking for.
If we're able to, I know for me, if I'm able to get more information, how that will affect the bonding capacity, because there are some unknowns there, and will that affect our ability to borrow money from the city, that's one of my concerns.
And again, I think that depends on how the loan is structured. You know, if we have to guarantee anything or have the covenant to them, as mentioned, then it potentially can.
I, I, I move for us to get some type of bids or something from the banks, so we can kind of actually look at the numbers, because if not, we're going to be a lot of hypothetical, so I think it's important that we get some numbers or something, so we can compare something.
Maybe to, to Commissioner Anderson, what if we just, well, if we do, can't reach out without doing.
Yeah.
Complete RFP, as I was saying, can we just find out, could we do one without, without, or, you know, being obligated?
No.
Okay, so I guess then that's our, that's our, if that's Commissioner Anderson's stopping point or, or her red line, then, you know.
Because we don't, we don't know what we're committing to.
Right, so if we want to do the RFP, if, are we, are we okay with that? I mean, if you don't want to do it, then, then now's the time, because obviously RFPs are not.
That's right.
They're, they're time consuming and they're a lot of work for funding. And so I'm, I'm happy to have them do it and, and as I, I would like to do this, but I'm not. But if we don't have, you know, at least three of us on the board, and I'd like to say that we got more than three that will support it, then let's just move on. So that's, so whatever, so it sounds like we got one that would say, let's move forward with an RFP.
I don't necessarily want to move forward right to an RFP, I think it's jumping the gun a little bit. We got steps here that were lined out that I think we need to slowly go through. Let's kind of discuss them, bring it back to us, have a discussion again. A portioning the cost, I think is a big variable for your residents to understand what that really will break down, how we're doing the math, what that looks like, I think, understanding and then getting updated costs and what the construction is going to be as well. Because if we do an RFP now, we may do it for too much, we may do it too little. I think RFPs are jumping the gun a little bit, let's slow it down and we've got time, so let's.
Well, first with all those steps, but as you know, construction cost is actually increasing. So I think it's important that we kind of, we don't want to put them a hole into next year. I think it's important that we, to, to, we can do all that simultaneously, right? We can get, get a bid.
Well, I think we're going to need to know exactly what the cost is and probably a methodology before we go to a bank. You know, because we got to have, show them that we have our act together, more or less. And we're good with the cost because of the cost escalation.
So we can start with the cost estimates and then from there.
Yeah, and then come up with a methodology is, all of that work can be done and maybe we can bring it back before we go through that solicitation process.
I just want to do something where they're not just coming back and nothing's been done, we just keep.
Yeah, and maybe we can get, without doing an RFP, okay, work with our financial advisor to see what some potential rates could be from another angle.
Okay, just something to.
Yeah, does that sound?
Yeah, Joel, did you have something you wanted to throw in there?
Come on, Joel. I was just going to mention that some, some things you can kind of dual track in terms of a process. But I think in terms of the point that you get to the bank, you probably are pretty far down the process. The bank's going to want to understand the assessment that's being levied. Um, and that process moving along, how it's going to be collected. And generally, um, you're setting up the assessment and, um, getting that in place and then getting the financing.
And Lance, he couldn't reach out as outside the RFP, could he?
I think he could probably look at some similar, you know, loans or, and loans that he's dealing with or agencies that he's working with, cities, and see what they're doing in the current market. And probably get some estimates.
Okay.
So we'll do something in-house first, in a sense, and because we still got a gap, I want everybody clearly to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
There's still a gap there.
So, so what we're looking to do then, we're, we're going to, we're going to move forward with, we need, uh, public services to get an updated
Cost.
Cost. We're then going to set up, do the RFP or do you want?
No, no, no.
No, we need to figure out who is getting charged what then.
Yeah, we're going to come up with the methodology, look at some potential.
And then I'd like that to be brought back.
It'll be brought back to council.
To have the HOA in that conversation as well, make sure everyone's still on the same page and then make that, that jump to RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Can I give you some direction?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Misty, and thank you, Joel, for coming out and being a part of this. You guys, if you want to check out, you can check out. Yep, thanks, thanks a lot, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, we've got four consent agenda items. Does anybody need to have any of those pulled? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Bradley Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, uh, Bradley Williams Parks Recreation Director. I'm here tonight with a special ver, uh, special event permit request, uh, for a street closure. Uh, this is for the Together as One nine eleven memorial run, uh, being organized by the Armando Borjas Junior Scholarship Foundation, Inc. Uh, it's, uh, the application is requesting authorization to temporarily close Fifth Street between Park Avenue and Central Avenue on nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, between the hours of five AM and one PM. Excuse me, and then also, uh, some rolling street closures along the race route during the run. Uh, this is, uh, an event that occurred last year as well with similar road closures. And, uh, Ms. Caitlin Cacheta, uh, from the organization is here. And I'll let her give a couple words on the event as well, and we can take any questions.
Now, is this the main street or?
We, so Caitlin Cacheta with Main Street Apopka. Uh, we, yes, we are helping them out and I'm also a board member of the Armando Borjas Junior Scholarship Foundation as well. So I did the application. We had a really great event last year. Uh, we had over two hundred racers actually, uh, do the, you know, the course. Uh, it was a lot of fun, we had a ton of activity afterwards. Um, and we're really excited to bring this event back to downtown. It was the first of its kind last year and I think it was a huge success.
Any questions for either Caitlin or for Bradley?
And just, uh, for, uh, information, the permit was reviewed by staff, including Police and Fire Department, uh, which recommended approval and was also recommended for approval by the DRC at their council meeting on March twelfth. So this has been in the works for a while.
Okay, all right, any other questions? If not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not with close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the special event permit application for the road closure request for the Together as One Memorial Run event.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. RFP two thousand twenty-four dash eight dash seventy-eight.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. Um, we have an award before your contract award, uh, for RFP two thousand twenty-four eight dash seventy-eight for the forensic audit requested by this council, um, to Cherry Becker. On April twenty-ninth, the Finance Department issued an RFP for the forensic audit. It was advertised and solicited from, uh, for firms from state certified public accounting firms for the forensic investigation of the items identified by the council, April third and April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, the inquiry deadline was May twentieth, the bid, E-bid submitted was May twenty-ninth. Evaluation committee met on July thirty-first. We know, we had notified users of about one thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine. Viewers of the RFP was six hundred and thirty-eight and vendors that were following were nineteen. We actually received six proposals from Ancient, Cherry Becker, CLA, which is Clinton Larson LLP, Raymond, RSM US LLP, UHY Advisor, Advisors Mid-Atlantic, Inc. The evaluation committee consisted of Bradley Williams Parks and Recs Director, Chief Mike McKinley of Police, Commissioner Diane Velasquez. And per Florida statutes, uh, as the Finance Director, I served as an advisor on the committee. And Jacob Smith, uh, City Administrator, who's the project manager, was also in attendance to the evaluation committee. Okay. We requested that the forensic audit firms give us a proposal, a pricing proposal based on a hundred percent of the transactions per direction from council. Um, of course, we got different pricing methods, some were random and some were by the transactional basis. We did not eliminate anyone as a result of that, again, because we wanted to make sure that we allowed everyone to participate and we never know exactly how this is going to fall out. However, their scoring, um, was impacted by, um, not doing transactional, um, pricing. So the ranges ranged from a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to one point four million dollars. Ancient came in at a hundred and sixty-seven, four fifty-nine, eighty. Cherry Becker, one million, three hundred and sixty, six hundred and twenty dollars. CLA, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight forty. Raymond, one million, three sixteen, seven thirty-two. RSM was one hundred and ninety-seven, but nine hundred and fifty-six. UHA was four hundred and fifty thousand, five ninety-nine, sixty-eight. Basically, right, Ancient and RSM, UHA, in some Cherry Becker, but very minor, and CLA did some random. Uh, Raymond was the one that did all transactional, that Cherry Becker did, let's say ninety-five percent transactional. So the ratings for the firms based on, um, the criteria, which was ability of personnel was twenty-five points, experience twenty-five points, ability to furnish the requested service, twenty points. Um, their approach, the forensic audit approach, twenty points, and the audit fees were just ten points. Cherry Becker scored a ninety-six point eight-three, Ancient eighty-nine point nine-three, Raymond eighty-nine point three-three, CLA eighty-five point one-seven, UHY seventy-nine point six-seven, and RSM fifty-three points. So at this time, the evaluation committee has recommended awarding the contract to Cherry Becker, um, in the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty, and negotiating the final proposed hours for the defined rates in Cherry Becker's proposal. And they did have the lowest average rate of a hundred and eighty. The others ranged two and three hundred dollars per hour. Any questions?
So I, I have a few questions. The first question is, and can you please clarify the basis of this forensic audit? That's going to cost taxpayers possibly one point three million dollars in, in climbing.
Um, basically, the forensic audit was requested by council. And they requested certain things be reviewed and looked at on a transactional basis. Um, I think it was initiated by Commissioner Nesta. Um, and then the mayor provided input as well as Commissioner Velasquez.
And this were based off of the findings of our state audit?
No, no.
So were there any type of material findings that would cause us to do a forensic audit that's going to cost one point three billion dollars and we already have a deficit in the budget?
Our annual audit for last year had no findings.
Okay, so where's the basis for the one point three million for this forensic audit that we're coming up with this for?
Was the rationale behind it, the basis for it? Do you act, you would have to, um, I think Commissioner Nesta had some concerns that he wanted a deeper dive on.
Well, the council decided as a whole.
Yes.
So that's where we're at.
So if the council, because I, I wasn't part of the council then, so if the council, I guess, four of these members are here, can you please kind of just bring me up to date? What, what are some of the findings or concerns that you guys have where you think we would need a one point three million forensic audit? So what are some of the findings? What are some of the concerns that, that's been seen to show some type of mystical funds?
I'm going to talk about sitting at the actual committee. Because it was a learning experience for me. Unfortunately, it was a cone of silence of some of the things, some of the information that I needed or I needed some clarification. The only person I was able to speak to was the purchasing, uh, department. And every question I posed before the purchasing director, her response was, we can't discuss it, I can't tell you, you have to wait till you sit at the committee. And that's where, of course, I had the question of, well, what's random sampling? What's transaction? And there were some things that I was unaware of at the time. And so during the process of the committee, uh, between, uh, Chief McKinley and of course, uh, Director Bradley, I learned what the process was because they have done this before. So there were some changes done in the scoring. But at the committee, I did, um, voice a concern. And so I'm going to go with why I had a concern. During his mayor's report, Nelson asked for items to add to the forensic audit to verify business tax receipts from two thirteen to current for Nester Real Estate Consultants. I had concerns because it was singling out one commissioner. Then qualified checks for all candidates for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four elections. I also expressed, why are we adding campaign donations, finance reports to the forensic audit? Because that is very readily available to the public and to each of us. We just go up to the county, uh, city clerk's office, she has all that available. It doesn't require a forensic audit. It doesn't impact the city revenue or how we expenditures. So I found that that in itself, being part of the forensic audit, was not necessary to be there. The number of late campaign reports for Nester, Commissioners Alexander Smith, Diane Velasquez, former Commissioner Kyle Becker, and for Mayor Nelson for all his elections, including, um, if I'm not mistaken, when he was a commissioner at Orange County. Um, I correct?
That was excluded. It, in the modification based on your input and I think a comment from you, it included all commissioners.
Then it was to verify or discredit the excess income of interest of one Florida bank over Sanovis to June of twenty twenty-three, with one Florida deciding not to take on any city Apopka deposits. Notify the extra earning that Nester secured and continued to generate. Nelson referred to promises made, promises kept, uh, from a postcard from Nester's latest, uh, election campaign. So as you can see, what was added to the forensic audit was very personal. It was isolating one commissioner. It, and it involved expenses that was all had to do with campaigning and promises. So I felt it, it compromised what the forensic audit, what it was intended for. So we went through the process because that was my biggest question with our purchasing director. I felt, can we eliminate this? Because I felt it was personal, it wasn't necessary. Um, I just felt, why are we spending any money for a forensic audit to come in to kind of go through records that has no impact on the city at all?
Well, I think that, and that's my, to, to your point, in addition, because you, I was still speaking as well.
At this point, because the forensic audit, and I was told by our finance director that I could not eliminate that section, it was part of the bid. So our auditors are bidding with what was included was something that I feel is irrelevant.
That we have the opportunity.
Of that, I feel we should not vote on this at all and not even entertain the forensic audit. Because it's not dealing, we don't have a spoke, this is not the spoke. The campaigning, whether Nick Nester is, uh, with, I'm sorry, I hate to say Nick Nester, whether Commissioner Nester paid his BTR, whether who was late on the finance, uh, financial reports, how much did we raise for donate, that is not part of a forensic audit. But we went through the process because you had put, we had put in the bid, we sat down as a committee and I know, and they can go back to that meeting, I had a concern with that. And if you speak to the purchasing director, that was my biggest concern. I still went forth with this process, but at this point, I do not want to even vote on this forensic audit or entertain it and pretty much just put it to sleep. It doesn't, it doesn't require a vote.
And my concern, like I was, the, the question still remains, what is the basis for the initial? What, why are we even doing a forensic? I know from my understanding, the mayor added some additional things. Prior to the mayor adding those things, what are the findings? The reason why we're actually doing the forensic audit? I think that's my initial question, because that, that's why I still, I lost it.
I understand, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Nesta to address your question.
Sure, yeah, so I mean, as you can see in the summary of the council, City Council Stafford Board, it says on April third, twenty twenty-four, and April seventeenth, the items for the investigation, uh, for the forensic audit investigation were identified. the items for the investigation, uh, for the forensic audit investigation were identified. So you can review those videos at your leisure.
I have reviewed them and I.
And then I don't know if you also reviewed, um, the firms' applications, uh, each firm that, each, all six of them. I know it's not part of our packet and they're seventy, eighty pages each. So I don't know if everybody reviewed those as well.
So what are your findings that you have concerns?
Excuse me. And so I want to make sure you guys are reviewing those. Uh, with all the data that was included, there was a meeting for the selection committee. I was the only uh, participant or, or uh, non-committee member in that meeting. So I want to make sure everyone saw that meeting as well. Um, I know it's not posted on our YouTube for everyone to access easily because I, I don't know why. Actually, I, I requested it to be multiple times. And, uh, and then obviously, like I said, there's multiple meetings you can go back to review when we went over this. It's, uh, it's been voted on. Here we are. And, and if you need more context, feel free to go back and review those meetings prior to this meeting.
As stated, I reviewed all those meetings. There are still no basis and they're still have not been identified if there's any type of mishandling of any funds.
Um, can I refer to the attorney? I don't feel it needs a vote. I just would like to.
Well, you, you're talking about whether to award the bid, that's the issue. So if you don't want to award any bid or say no bid, that's something you can do. But it will take some sort of a motion to do that. You know, and if you don't want to do it now and you want a table, that's also.
Don't want a table. So I will make a motion. Actually, even the public, I apologize.
Well, I didn't submit anything, uh, for the forensic audit because I didn't find anything in the, in the previous audits that were done that were raised red flags. I didn't submit anything.
So, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to ask this question, which I didn't ask. When we do our regular audit, are they, now that I understand what transaction is and sampling, do they do actual transactions or they do sampling?
Random, random, yes ma'am. Based on the material, excuse me?
What's the percentage that?
Oh, it depends on the materiality level. It's, yeah. It's not a percentage. It depends on what they're looking at and how material that is. It's a calculation that they do. They verify the internal controls. We have to give them a document that says these are the internal controls that we have in place. They verify those internal controls to see if they're working as expected. If they're not, if they find something where there's a weakness, they'll do a deeper dive at that time. Okay?
All right. So let me, let me just go over a few things before we, well, we'll, we'll also have some. Now, these aren't really questions. Um, so why don't we go ahead and anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter and then we'll bring it back home?
Leroy Bell, twenty-three zero eight, Blue Meadows Court. My understanding for the forensic audit, if you go all the way back, there's been money missing from the sale of equipment that was from the muck for the farm workers. There were money been missing from a COVID. There was money earmarked for the homeless shelter. Where's that money? This administration know where that money at? We got a right to know where this money at. It been voted on for the audit. Now, if you want to uphold this administration, don't be so blatant with it. Don't be blatant with it. This man, you, this, this administration finally got his Tim Scott and Candace Owen. Just don't make any sense. Wait, 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 hold up. I, I said this administration. I'm talking, I'm talking.
You just called out two people.
Who, do you see, do you see Tim Scott here? Do you see Candace Owen here?
Okay, you're out of order.
But anyway, the, 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 the audit is to find out for the missing money. That's where it at. It been voted on five to zero for this audit. Now you meant to tell me we're going to come back and double back and not let the citizen know where their tax money been? To save administration that's failing, that don't make no sense.
Albert McKinney, three-six-zero-three, Golden Gem Road. Tonight, when I came in, I'd give you Commissioner some papers. I'd like you to have a look at them. The first one was presented on June the fifteenth. Uh, and it was a request for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for work at Golden Gem Road. I'll read it to you. Unplanned event, phase one, install high-capacity interceptor trench to capture ground and surface water and dig the pond. Plug the pipe and uh, install aqueducts for start. There's no aqueducts being installed. There's no need for them. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars we need to account for. If you have a look at this particular paper here, this particular paper is from Dr. Devo. It describes a cylinder of a mineshaft that's been thirty, seventy-five foot in diameter and thirty feet deep. Let's take that back to, to, to some calculations. The volume of a cylinder is pi R squared by the height. Effectively, if we take the measurements and feed back to yards, we have twelve point five yards and ten yards deep. So in actual fact, three point one four seven times twelve point five prime, times twelve point five times ten comes to four thousand nine hundred and ten cubic yards. Yet Dr. Devo states he only took, we only lost two hundred to four hundred yards. There's inaccuracies of between ten and twenty times in that document. In this document, it claims that we're going to use aqueducts. There's been no aqueduct ordered. There's no aqueduct needed. I give you a, a sample of how it could be done with simply sandbags. So you need to be stewards of our money. At the last meeting, Commissioner Velasquez was very careful to say that she had expectations of the city, how they dealt with contractors. Well, commissioners, I have expectations of how you deal with contractors. Because there's money being wasted, there's money being said to be spent that isn't, hasn't been spent. That needs to be addressed. And the only way to address it is by find, is, is, is by a forensic audit. Because I will be bringing to you over the next few weeks, information on money that's gone missing during Golden Gem Road. I have asked the city clerk for documentation that with respect to certification that needed to be provided. It can't be provided.
Why is this mic muted? I think he must have muted it.
I haven't touched anything.
That needs to be unmuted right now. Time needs to pause. Is it working? Because I can't hear him. Interesting.
Okay, so we have anomalies all the way down the line and contractual obligations. This isn't just one of them, but it is one that the commissioners failed to address over the weeks that I've come here. You are aware that there's been dirty fill gone into the aquifer. Now, it's going to be a problem because if Dr. Devo says there's only between two and four hundred yards of fill filled in there, and I say there's five thousand, how much does a ton of riprap cost? Because it's going to be twenty times more with my volume than it is with his. There's so many anomalies that's going on with the city unless you get people like me, self-confessed expert. I know we've got experts up here, but I'm a self-confessed expert. And everything I've told you guys about Golden Gem Road has proved to be true. So when are you going to start listening to people who have expertise? I don't have financial expertise. I can't study what's been done. But trust me, I have enough information now to have the FBI come in here and take a look at the records. And it's going to happen sooner rather than later.
Anybody else from the public wishes to speak on this one?
Good evening, Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine-one, Rowan Hills Lane. I'm going to be brief on this, uh, because I see why people like my neighbor, Mr. Bell, get upset about certain things that is being done in city council and during the meetings. You guys play with us like we're stupid. You lie to us like, you know, you don't have no accountability, no responsibility. And it's a shame. I would ask the Commissioner Anderson to go back.
It's just that you're, you're talking to the council.
What I'm, what I'm saying on the audit, she said she didn't have all the experience. So I've been, she don't have all the knowledge. I've been here for almost three years coming to these meetings. I was, I would suggest to get yourself up to speed, go back and look at some of the meetings.
The council, not.
For, for, for the council, council, I would suggest that everybody on the council go back and get some update and some content to everything that has gone on up until this time. Because we wouldn't be at this point to move forward with, uh, present, uh, present, present forensic audit if we hadn't gone through all the steps to get here. And so to get here and then just say, oh, look, let's go back and let's, let's, let's uh, get rid of everything. But I'm going to just simply remind you, and I say this all the time, because sooner or later it's going to catch up with all of you. And that's why, you see, I see there's hope and I'm smiling because I know everything that's done in the dark is going to come to the light. And I'm trying to educate you and give you guys warning. So when it hits you, it don't tear up you and your family. So to all elected officials, to all, to all residents, to the Apokka chief, to the Apokka critic, to the Apokka voice, principle matters, integrity matters.
Talking about the issue, we're not talking.
Honest, this is about the issue. Honesty matters. Accountability matters. Responsible, when we doing this audit, this is about the audit. This is about the audit. This is about the audit. When we doing these audit, these things matter when you doing this forensic audit. Morals matters, ethics matters, character matters, procedures matters, leadership matters, and the law matters. All of these things matters. And I can look around here and I can see some smiles on some faces, but you guys do a good job of controlling the narrative in-house. But it's coming. And I can just say that with a smile, it's coming and everything that's, that's done in the dark will come to light. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, we'll close the public here. Just a couple of things I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry, somebody else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Um, it is hot up here.
Drop, drop that mic down.
Yeah. It is hot up here. Um, yeah. No, not that kind of hot. Temper hot. Um, I don't know if this is the place for me to talk about this, but um, when it comes to the audit, I have watched you online stream. And this is my first opportunity to be in the building. So I'm glad to be here. Uh, my name is Virginia Street. I'm a thirty-year resident, uh, of my beautiful city of Apokka that I love so much.
Can you give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
Virginia Street is my name.
Okay, and your address?
Oh, two one one nine Palm Vista Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, um, I am here, um, on behalf of the Hope Helping Our People Eat organization and, uh, it's a community organization, if you're not aware of it.
Ma'am, we, we, I hate to tell you this, we need to be on the forensic audit. This is not.
But, but this is about the money for, that we're talking about for the audit. Part of it is, part of it is, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be to the point.
Okay.
I'm going to get there. I promise you. Just ride with me in a minute, okay? But what we're, what I'm talking about is the actual, in forty-one days, there's going to be a, a law that the homeless cannot, cannot, you know, be out there. And the consequences that will come along with it. In forty-one days, we're, we're really worried about what's going to happen to the homeless in forty-one days. We're helping, we're providing meals for them on Sunday. We talk to them. We, you know, connect with them emotionally. You know, we know their struggles and everything. But they're concerned about what's going to happen to them in forty-one days. Are they going to be in jail? We're going to, what are we going to do with them? You know, and what are the plans? I don't know how much of this is in the audit, you know, because I haven't seen it myself. But where, where do I need to talk about it? If this is not the place.
It's, it's really not the right forum.
Okay, well, you.
Um, we have a, I would suggest to you, we have a, it's called Next Step Foundation. It's a, it's a homeless, we've got a, a group of churches and other, you know, community leaders. Uh, do you know about it?
I do know about it, but I don't know who to talk to about it.
If you will get, um, if you'll get somebody the, your information, I'll be happy to get you.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. That's, that's what I came for.
Absolutely, thank you.
And, and, um, um, also, okay, maybe that, that's going to answer my questions about where we're going next.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That's all I needed.
Thank you.
And see how easy that was?
Yeah.
Easy peasy, it's cool right here, right? All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, anybody else? Good. Nikki?
I'm not as tall as Ms. Street. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I have high respect for each one of you up there. And, um, my concern regarding this forensic audit, it seems to me that things were added to redirect the audit. My concern as, as citizen of Apokka, I do love the city of Apokka. I appreciate the hard work each one of you are doing because many of you, I see you pretty much on a daily basis, doing more than just sitting up there. And what I'm going to plead to you guys is, I heard what Commissioner Vasquez said, but I'm going to plead to you guys because if you look at the news lately and look at what's happening in the village of Dalton with their board of trustees and with the mayor there, please, guys, please let's not turn our city of Apokka into a public show. Can we please, if a forensic audit is needed, can we stick to what was the original request and have that audit without adding non-relevant stuff to the audit? Because we, as the citizens, we as the taxpayers, I don't care who spend the money, but I think we have a right to know where our money is going. And if there's nothing to hide, then show us. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just want to clarify one thing. The bid went out including these extra requests. Part of the bid is these auditors actually use this, that they're going to invest hours into this. This, the list that I read you. Yeah, I can't ask, I can't award a bid and then say, don't do this. Because that, that's not the bid. The bid is, it includes this entire, what I read to you. Am I correctly saying that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead. Wouldn't give a public comment and we'll, we'll close the public here.
But from my understanding, that bid, you, five of you guys voted on all those items on that bid, is that correct? So everyone voted on those items at that time?
No, there was items after that.
At that time, and, and, and let me just, I'm speaking, please. Let me just be very clear. Just because I'm a new commissioner, if I didn't agree with something previously, I don't have to vote on something I don't agree to. I've reviewed every email that I requested. I went back and reviewed all the different minutes. I watched the YouTube videos. I sat in some of those meetings. I don't agree with it.
Before the solicitation went out, we were gathering information for the scope. Commissioner Nesta provided a list of items. Mayor Nelson provided a list of items. Commissioner Velasquez provided a, a list of items, a couple of items. That's what went into the scope of the R F P. Now, to be clear, we can negotiate. Okay, based on whatever hours we want to spend on, you know, our areas that we want to spend, but it's up to this council to change that. If you say, no, I don't want to do that part of it, those hours and, and dollars are backed out.
So which part of the budget, we already budgeted for this already, the budget?
No, this is not budgeted at all.
Exactly. So we already have a deficit in the budget. So we would need additional one point three, where would these funds be coming from?
Out of reserves.
And we already have the deficit already?
No, that's in the four oh one fund.
But, but we can't, but.
Let me, it's not in this fund.
Uh, I'm aware, I'm, I'm going, I'm going toward the line of questioning. So I've spoken to several taxpayers who do not agree with this forensic audit. They have the same concerns I have, is that there has been no findings. There have been different council members that came up with a random scope with no type of basis on why they actually want the work done. I'm asking for someone, because I wasn't here, and I read up, still with everything I reviewed, no one can point to any findings where they say this was a misuse of funds.
Okay.
Commissioner Valesquez, if you are gonna move, I, I would ask that you move to approve. I know, I'm still, I'm, we're all talking right now, so, uh, I would ask that you do, when you do make the motion, to move forward with this, but without the superfluous personal tax, things like that. It would save tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands of dollars on this, and we'd be able to negotiate from there.
Now, it's, that was only thirty-five transactions, and to be honest with you, just to be clear.
Not on their paperwork, it was a lot more than that, that they listed.
Um, I gave them the transactions. Business tax receipt was a lot.
Right.
Business tax, but for the campaign reports.
Not talking about all the superfluous stuff that wasn't originally discussed, because we didn't actually vote on all the additions. That was all added at the end or through email or through, uh, mayor's report, so that wasn't a vote. That was all just provided and we never agreed to it.
Okay, I'm, I would have to go back and look at the meetings, but I know that you provided a list at a certain point. I know this council voted five zero to do a forensic audit. I'm not saying that that all occurred at the same meeting.
I agree. Commissioner Valesquez, that's my only ask, moving forward.
Um, okay, let's, let's bring up last public comment and we'll.
Who's the last public comment?
Please, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fat boy. Ace Wood on forty-seven East Magnolia Street. The mayor made a statement a minute ago that I wanna clarify on. Hope does an awful lot for the homeless people here in Apaka. Most of them people that worked, the lady that was up here and stuff, they even feeding the homeless out of their pockets. They work to pay their mortgages, pay their power bill, pay their water bill, and then they go buy groceries.
So how?
And feed these people, how I'm getting it. The city received seventy thousand dollars to help feed the homeless several years ago. Mayor Nelson will say that, I don't, he don't know what Ace Wood was talking about. Well, let me explain to you. The Next Foundation is also Mayor Nelson sits on that board at the Presbyterian Church with a couple of other ministers. I went to one of their meetings one night, I sat next to a preacher that was from Week I, Week I of Baptist, I believe it was. He asked Mayor Nelson, he said, Mayor, where's the seventy thousand dollars that the city received to help feed the homeless? He looked directly in that preacher's eyes and says, you gotta come and ask the city commissioners, 'cause I don't know what they did with it. He threw y'all's ass under the bus. Sorry about using that word. But anyway, the Next Foundation, how many dinners have y'all fed? Yes, the homeless is in a bad situation here in Apaka, but we got seventy thousand dollars in y'all's checking accounts or savings account somewhere. Ms. Blanch, let me like see where it's at. I don't know about none of the other money, but I know that seventy thousand dollars is there in Mayor Nelson.
Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Um, now, just a couple of things I'd like to bring everybody's attention is, and we talked about this forensic audit and, and Commissioner Nesta, you've been in two audit, you've had two audits during your, your time here. And the first one back, uh, when we had, uh, Daniel Anderson come on July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, to do the, the audit, uh, the only thing you asked was, um, Commissioner asked where the restatement came from. Daniel Anderson stated that when the finance department were preparing the accounts for the two thousand twenty-two audit, they noted that some items had been accrued for previous, for previously, that they were seeing in accounts payable, that there were capital-related expenditures. There were purchase orders that were outstanding, where previously they were recorded as actual expenditures instead of just being a purchase order for future expenditures. Commissioner Nesta asked for specific examples, and Blanche Sherman stated the amendment that was approved for a budget at the end of two thousand twenty-one to carry forward POs and capital projects in two thousand twenty-two was booked as an actual journal, journal entry instead of a budget amendment. Therefore, it resulted in overstatements. It was any of the, it was any of the major projects and POs that were going on at that particular time. That's it. No other, that's it. So then we go forward to the next one. Which was, uh, on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Daniel Anderson gives his report. Mayor Nelson asks any questions? And no questions from Commissioner Nesta. So, so let's just go back and when I got in, came into office in April of, of two thousand and eighteen, I instituted in, starting January, the January reports, two thousand nineteen, that city council approved all dispersments, right? Do you know of anybody else that does that?
That was.
Blanche, no?
Um, no, I'm, I'm not aware of anyone else who, um, commits it, other than pension committees, you know, that does disbursement reports to the city.
So anyway, so then I said, you know, when, so Commissioner Nesta brings forward all these, these accusations, allegations about money missing and all that. So I, I went to Rob Hippler, our IT director and Blanche Sherman, and I said, can you do me a favor? I said, can you give all the commissioners and the, all of the Camp Weewaw dispersments through May of twenty-four? Can you give the City of Apaka reserves from two thousand and eighteen? Can you give all the opioid crisis payments up through April ninth, two thousand twenty-four? Can you give all of the mayor's reimbursements from January two thousand eighteen through April twenty-four? Can you give us the Farm Workers Association payment? Can you give us the Apaka property transactions from two thousand eighteen into two thousand twenty-four? And can you give us the grant awards from January two thousand eighteen through April of twenty-four? Which, which you did, right?
Most of that was provided, yes, sir.
So.
The reserves are in the cap.
Were, were given before we got to the point where we, we did the RFP for the audit. And would you say that everything you sent was complete and, and accurate?
I, yes, I gave them a list of transactions, yes, sir.
Rob Hippler, would you say that there was anything missing or anything that we didn't send to the commissioners that was? Okay. Okay. Okay, so it, it's, it's a one point three million dollar witch hunt. So if, if the council wants.
And to be clear, it's more than one point three, because we have to deploy, you have to deploy any additional staff to assist with getting the records or?
That is very true.
So this is one point three.
Plus.
And with the, my, from that list, there hasn't been able to identify any type of findings or anything. We just, we already have a deficit. And to spend one point three million dollars just on a hunch that something has happened and you can't identify anything, I, I just, I just can't agree with it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, absolutely, obviously. Camp Weewaw loses half a million dollars a year. We, we paid a substantial amount for that, uh, the appraisal was an interesting one. I'm sure you reviewed that as well. The property on Rock Springs Road and Sandpiper, the southeast corner of that, that we sold, immediately went back on the market for a million dollars more and then sold. So somebody's making money somewhere, neither were that inept, or somebody knows exactly what's going on and we lost that much money. So again, I'm sure you saw that one too.
And X Y Z, yes.
So that's great. So I, I'm, it's, it's scary that you don't wanna question that, that we lost a million dollars.
Mr. Nesta, you need to keep this out of personal realm here.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
No, I won't be doing that, thank you.
But I'm definitely.
Now, when she's addressing, I will address her.
All right, uh, I will make one correction. Because I was a commissioner before twenty eighteen. And we were reviewing all the dispersments. That was done, it started, I believe, in two fifteen, two fourteen. It started pretty early on because I remember the Ministry Alliance came in and it was, um, and they wanted to see all the expenses. So we started the dispersments way before twenty eighteen. And they are available.
You said that's correct?
Oh, I can't say that's correct. When we did our research, but I have not this.
Sure.
Agree with what she said. You know, I, what we went back to do was to find, the first time we could find that it went to council, and that's what we found.
Because I do remember that, um, that was a, that was a request made by the Ministry Alliance that they wanted to have the dispersments. They wanted to know all the money that was being expended by the city. And I remember that that was something that was available. Um, it's standard, so, um, but it was done before twenty eighteen.
That's good to know.
Um, and the reason why, again, I just feel that, um, the forensic audit, it, it just became personal. And, and that was a concern that I had when I sat, before I sat with the committee, was that I wanted to understand what sampling was, what transactions, and how many transactions are we talking about?
At the time, they were priced on for all dispersments at that, at that time, because they continue to grow. It was about sixty-five thousand transactions. That's your biggest, um, transactional base. You know, some of the BRT tax receipts are not as large. You know, some of the other things will be captured in that sixty-five thousand dollar base, like the land acquisitions, the Camp Weewaw transactions, all of that will be captured within those.
And with the BTRs, um, prior to when we brought the vendor in, which I believe was October of twenty twenty-one, prior to that, we, the, the BTR was, had not been capturing all the businesses in the city. They were, when we hired the vendor, I mean, he, he recovered, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars since then. Um, so I just felt that going back from, uh, two eighteen was, um, it, it just didn't serve a purpose.
Okay.
And Commissioner Valesquez, again, that's my request is move forward without the superfluous unnecessary personal tax.
We've got a motion by Commissioner, I think.
No, well, I, no, what? Initially, until she, until our finance director noted that we could have eliminated this from the forensic audit.
Saying you can do that now. I mean, we can negotiate.
Why couldn't I do it while I was at the committee?
You were in a.
When I was sitting at the committee.
Because you were serving as a committee member, not a council member. And the items that were presented were presented by the mayor, items were presented by, um, Commissioner Nesta as well as yourself.
And let's, so Blanche, you were gonna say my little five items, what would you, of the one point three million dollars that Mr. Nesta wants to spend, what would you say my portion of that little bit?
Oh, I would have spent, you voted for this too, Mayor, five oh. This is on, this is on your name, just as much as it's online.
Okay. Give me a minute, let me look at, because we do have a list of all of the items. And they were proposed based on what the, the estimated hours and their, um, estimated rate.
All right.
So for business tax receipts, actually, that is one that is not even included in the one point three for Cherry Backer at this time. Because they probably would do that on a random somewhere. Qualifying checks for the candidates, that's six thousand dollars, six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Late campaign things, eight thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Um, the, the interest income thing, okay, that's two thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Promises made, promises kept, six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Um, are we dealing with attorney fees or not? That hadn't came up. So those, for those particular items. Here, confirm the interest rate for Commissioner Nesta, da, 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 eleven thousand three hundred and forty. Uh, breakdown of attorney fees, I don't know if this was yours, Mayor, or whatever, but that's eleven thousand three hundred and forty. The buck, the bulk of this is related to those dispersments. Okay?
But tens of thousands of dollars on a personal attack of taxpayer money, using taxpayer money to personally attack one person.
I think all of this is personal tax, personally. I think all this is the taxpayers' expense of campaigning here on the dice. So I think this is, I don't think this has absolutely nothing to do with the taxpayers, and I don't think it's any basis of it. And I think we will be wasting one point three million dollars of taxpayers' money if we move forward with, with this forensic audit. So that's just how I feel.
So back to Commissioner Valesquez, if you wanna make a motion to reject?
I just think we don't have a real, where's the real scope if I eliminate all of this? If I eliminate the campaign, the BTRs, uh, what is it? The attorney fees, um, campaign, what is this? Uh, promises made, promises kept?
Thirty thousand, forty thousand?
If we just go with the list that came from Commissioner Nesta, um, and I'm adding here at the dice, at the podium, again. Uh, for the dispersments, it's like one mil, one million two hundred and forty, because that's the sixty-five thousand transactions. Okay? Um, actually, it doesn't include the employee stuff right about now, but I would say if I'm rounding one point, still about one point three almost. Because it's one million two forty, you got thirty-five thousand for Camp Weewaw, um, two thousand eight eighty for the opiate, opioid, um, crisis, um, property owned, fifteen thousand three hundred.
Mrs. Sherman, sorry to interrupt, did you supply what you're reading from to all the council?
Um, I think it was at the committee. This is details that the committee had.
Okay. So not everyone has that?
No.
No, this is details at the committee level.
Ms. Valesquez, back to your motion.
I can share it if you. But it's, it's still around one point, two fifty to one point three.
In addition to the staff that's needed, and the number is continuous, because it's.
Yeah, the staff will be needed, yeah.
Commissioner Valesquez, do you wanna make the motion to reject the offer? Reject the forensic audit?
You know, I did get a few phone calls because there was a concern about the forensic audit. I had my concerns. And, um, and then we have, we have, uh, residents who aren't supportive of the forensic audit, except that I just felt that the bid as it went out did not focus or did not go within the real scope of what are we looking for, or?
I think it included requests from every commissioner. We broke it down like this so that you would have this opportunity to say, I wanna keep this in the audit or I wanna take this out as a council.
Read the list of what he had Rob sent out, when did that go out? The, the list that you, when did that?
A, April, I think, April this year?
It might be the seventeenth. I sent you a list of everything and when everybody submitted and the date they submitted. Everything came in before the solicitation went out.
Mr. Valesquez?
We picked, we picked the most expensive, um, the highest bidder here, and I know that was part of the committee.
That's because it's on a transactional basis, they have the lowest average rate. Their hourly rate is a hundred and eighty, Ancient is two sixty, um, CLA is two hundred and twenty dollars per hour, Raymond is two hundred and eighty-three dollars per hour, RSM is three hundred and fifty-three dollars per hour, UHY is two hundred and thirty dollars per hour.
What was Cherry Backer, what was that?
One hundred and eighty dollars per hour.
I just feel that it's not gonna be popular, but I just feel that we were all over the place with this forensic audit. And, um, it didn't have a real scope.
Well, we did have a scope, and then it was muddied and clouded. Well, we did have a scope, and then it was muddied and clouded. Uh and just made to be a joke.
And I will say this, um I remember after the mayor's report, and he and he added all of that. Um I do remember uh Commissioner saying that it was set up to be to fail. And and that's what I believe, it was set up to fail. And um at this time, I don't think it's going to serve the council or the public. Because we don't have a real scope of what we're looking for. And um I believe that this really did muddy our intention of the forensic audit. So um there's two options, I mean, we have one commissioner that is saying that there's no need for it, I I didn't get Commissioner Smith. Um but can I get a feedback from you?
I've been submitting items because from the artists that were done, there was nothing for it.
Okay. So, I mean, we obviously do have the mayor who's who's not for it. Um we have Commissioner Anderson who's not for it, we have Commissioner Smith who's not for it. So it it's.
And yourself, you're not for it either.
Well, I'm not for it because I I didn't feel that what was added to the forensic audit was necessary. I thought it was personal attacks. And uh I just felt it was, it wasn't necessary. So I'm I'm not going to submit a bid.
You're gonna make a motion to reject?
To reject this forensic audit.
Got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Failed. Rejects the bid three to two with Nesta and Nelson. Okay, next up.
So wait a minute, wait a minute, no, no, wait, I have to go back.
No, no, it's, no, no, we're done, we're done.
Attorney.
It's almost like this was planned.
No, um.
Weird, you you talking about a motion to reconsider?
Please, how do I bring back this?
As I've mentioned previously, you do not follow Robert's rules to the letter. If you did, there is a mechanism to go back and reconsider. Usually, it's based on new or additional information that you didn't have at the time of making the decision beyond how people vote. But that's what it is.
I'd like to reconsider. So what would I need to do to reconsider this vote?
First of all, that needs to be on the agenda. It can be on this agenda if you want to, but in terms of the sequence of events, it should now be moved towards the end of the decisions.
I'm sorry, explain that.
Yes, yes, we just did this item, and you have an agenda that you already voted on. So in in theory, again, y'all make the rules, but you should go to the next agenda item. And if you want to reset reconsider it, bring it back at the end of this agenda, but that's up to you guys.
So I would like to reconsider this item and bring it back.
Make the motion if you get enough, in order to reconsider, you have to have a motion supported to reconsider.
So I make the motion. I make the motion to reconsider this vote for the forensic audit.
And for the record, because you supported the past motion, you can vote to reconsider because you voted for it, if you were to follow Robert's rules again, which you're not required to do.
Okay, so I will bring this back at the end of.
Well, it's a motion, it's first, it's a motion to reconsider that has to get support, then it would be put back on the floor.
Okay, so I have a mo- so I'm making a motion to bring back to reconsider this vote.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Yep, okay, fails.
Well, for the record, I will say this, I don't, I think that's unfair that you voted uh with Nester, Commissioner Nester, because it was based on what you had added to this, to this uh audit. Um.
Okay, alright.
Commissioner Blaskas, you got the, that, he played you on that one.
He did.
Unfortunately.
He did.
You got played.
Alright, next up, public hearing ordinance number three thousand fifty-seven.
Ordinance number three thousand fifty-seven. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by SLF, SFL Partners LLC and JFJ Real Investments LLC, located north of Fourth Street, east of Bradshaw Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, comprising one point nine seven acres more or less, providing directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve, adopt ordinance number three thousand fifty-seven.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand sixty-six.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-six. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by PM S One REO LLC, located on the southwest corner of Van Dyke Road and Effie Drive, comprising of fifty-four point eight five acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand sixty-six. You get a motion?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand sixty-nine.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Michael Gentles, located at thirty-five ninety-five West Kelly Park Road and thirty-six eleven West Kelly Park Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand sixty-nine.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay, I'm gonna remain with my original vote.
So it'll be four to one uh with Commissioner Blaskas in the in opposition. Okay, next up, ordinance number three thousand seventy?
Ordinance number three thousand seventy. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Part Three Land Development Code by amending Article Five Development Standards, by amending Section five point fourteen Utilities, by adding new Section five point fourteen point seven Natural Gas Installation, providing for installation of natural gas lines within subdivisions or re-subdivided areas, providing for developer payment of costs of installation and materials, providing for cost sharing for gas main extensions under certain conditions, providing for construction of installation and main extension, providing for easements and permits, providing for ownership and maintenance, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Cliff?
No changes.
No changes, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
I'll be becoming three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Just a question, if there's a commissioner sitting here tonight who is on the board of Lake and Apopka Natural Gas, should he recuse himself from any vote?
If you're asking me, the answer is no.
Alright, anybody else want to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand seventy. Got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand fifty-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand fifty-eight. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county low medium to industrial for certain real property owned by SLF, SFL Partners LLC and JFJ Real Investments LLC, located north of Fourth Street, east of Bradshaw Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, comprising one point nine seven acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jean Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero five eight, amending the future land use designation for three fifty-seven West Fourth Street from county low in low residential district to city industrial. The subject property is approximately one point nine seven acres in size and currently vacant. The applicant's requesting the amendment of the future land use to allow light industrial development. The proposed land use allows a maximum floor area of point six per acre under the comprehensive plan and consistent with the proposed zoning, which is the preceding item on the agenda, with um zoning of light industrial compatible with the surrounding areas as well. The properties to the north and west have future land use designations of industrial, while properties to the east and south are in unincorporated Orange County with flu designations of low medium. DRC recommends approval at its meeting on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the future land use amendment. The recommended motion tonight is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero five eight and hold it over for a second reading and adoption. Staff is available for questions.
Alright, any questions for Jean? If not, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand fifty-eight at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand fifty-nine.
Ordinance number three thousand fifty-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county R two residential district to IL light industrial for certain real property owned by SFL Partners LLC and JFJ Real Investments LLC, located north of Fourth Street, east of Bradshaw Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, comprising one point nine seven acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is the rezoning companion of the preceding item. It's a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero five eight, amending the future land use that, I'm sorry, the zoning amend, it is a zoning amendment, I'm so sorry. It, this ordinance is the first reading of ordinance number three zero five nine, amending the zoning designation for three fifty-seven West Fourth Street from county R two residential district to city IL light industrial. The applicant is requesting to amend the zoning from to light industrial to allow industrial uses. This request has been made by the applicant simultaneously with the request to amend the future land use of industrial to ensure consistency with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. Properties to the north and west have zoning designations of IL, while properties to the east and south are in unincorporated Orange County with zoning designations of county R two district. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three zero five nine and hold it over for a second reading and adoption. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean Sanchez? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand fifty-nine at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blaskas, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and seventy-one.
Ordinance number three thousand and seventy-one. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Orchid Estates Community Home Owners Association, Mega GNG LLC, Jacob Snavely, Forty-six twenty-five Chandler Road LLC, Matthew and Deborah Shaw, Daphne Martin, generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising twenty-eight point five four acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, Bobby Howell, planning manager, the request of annex multiple parcels totaling twenty-eight point five four acres into the City of Apopka. Properties are located generally south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, as you can see outlined on the map in the black, is the properties that are proposed for annex. You can see the aerial and vicinity maps. Future land use and zoning maps of the surrounding parcels uh show residential and nature. Parcels are contiguous to the city limits and are eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida chapter, Florida statute, Chapter one seventy-one. Signing of city zoning and future land use designations will occur at a later date through action of the city council. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the annexation. Recommendation, recommended motion this evening to accept first reading of ordinance number thirty seventy-one, hold it over for a second reading and adoption. Uh myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for either Bobby or the applicant?
I've got a few questions.
You want the applicant or?
Applicant, please.
Uh good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, two fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida, and here representing the owners of these parcels. Uh also in attendance is uh the pro- our project engineer, uh Luke Clayson with A- APN Engineering for the overall project. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys being here. I guess walk me through what the intentions are here, and and my specific concerns are the road, access, things like that. How how are we gonna get there?
Talking about Chandler?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I could, I could briefly, so so this is obviously going to be a a multi-step uh process in terms of of this project that is an assemblage of uh multiple tax parcels that are owned by multiple owners. Uh um these is the the, what's before you tonight is the first reading on the annexation involving twenty-eight point, twenty-eight and change acres of property. Um it it should be noted that uh as part of the JPA notice is provided to the county. Uh county did provide comments, but their comments were really of the nature of 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 not having any objection to the annexation because if these properties are ultimately brought in, especially the central properties that are that are on the screen before you, if they're brought into the uh city, it it cures a current enclave, meaning that these properties have city property, city are, property already in the city located and on all of their sides. So um in terms of the overall project, i- it's larger in size. I'll I'll take you through a another slide that will illustrate that. Here is the overall project, um in in it it's actually about a hundred and fifteen acres in size. As before you tonight is uh an- annexation of the existing Chandler Road, which is not a public right-of-way, it's actually privately owned. It's owned by the Orchid Estate Association. It would be brought into the over- this overall project. There is no uh plan to improve that road along the the northern part of it because this and what what this owner would control and developer ultimately would control is only fifteen feet wide. So it it's substandard today. There isn't sufficient right-of-way to make improvements. The good news is working with staff, your staff, um through the early stages of this process, as we said, it's gonna be multiple steps before you all, this is the first step. We have a comp plan amendment that's gonna follow, that includes all of this p- property uh that has been submitted, it's pending, it's gonna come before you, hopefully this this late summer or fall. That is proposing to change this property to mixed use, and then. And then ultimately, the project, there's also a rezoning application to Kelly Park interchange mixed use. And it's going to have access points, two of them on Kelly Park Road. I don't know if this laser works or you can see that. There's one here. There's one here. In addition, as I said before, existing Chandler Roads can remain in existing condition, private road. This project is contemplating potential future improvement of that road. And so anywhere where it can be made standard, it is along the boundary of the property down to a future potential access point where I'm pointing with the laser. Of course, this overall conceptual plan comes later in this process. The first step would be the annexation that's before you tonight. And then we have some additional steps to go through, including review of the comp plan amendment and the rezoning afterwards by, complete that review by DRC, complete that review by Planning Commission, of course, come before you all for public hearings. But tonight is just that first step, which is this.
Annexation. Now, I appreciate those extra details in the pictures to that. Didn't really understand the plan here, and it looked like this was going to be a mess that I have to deal with. So that makes it a lot better, understanding that this is a much bigger project. It's going to have access directly on Kelly Park. And to reiterate, it's going to be some larger lot homes, some smaller lot homes, and then some townhomes. Is that what that, is that accurate?
No townhomes.
No townhomes, okay. All single family, just larger and smaller lots?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. And then, is this within the KPI?
That will be, that's what's being proposed.
Okay. So it's not right now?
Well, technically, I think how it's a viewpoint is is that any of the properties that are within the KPI aren't technically in the KPI until they get a mixed use, future land use, and a KPI mixed use zoning designation. And so this property is similarly situated to those in that it would take that discretionary review and approval from this board before it'd be considered to be in the Kelly Park interchange mix.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Album community three six oh three, Golden Gem Road. As was just mentioned just now, entry into the KPI is discretionary. For a number of years when we tried to get into KPI, we were told that we couldn't get into KPI. Why? Because we were about a hundred yards outside the KPI. So my question is tonight, how far outside of the KPI, if they're outside of the KPI, is this current development?
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve.
Are you able to answer that? Sorry. How far is it out? Or does it touch a border?
Yeah, these western properties are technically within a half mile of the KPI. There's, I'm sorry, one mile of the KPI. And there is policy that supports that if a portion of a project is within the KPI radius, then the remainder can come in if it's made up of multiple.
Something touches it. Something on this project touches it.
Yes. I mean, there are maps that show portions of this property that are in your comp plan today in which it's in the radius.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. That will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy-one at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen is a resolution of the city of Apopka adopting a vision zero policy.
Vision zero is Central Florida's goal to zero traffic deaths. You heard a wonderful presentation. Can you hear me good? All right. You heard a wonderful presentation at the last city council meeting from Kelly Furon. She's here tonight. Resolution twenty twenty-four adopts vision zero policy as the policy for road and traffic safety in the city of Apopka, commits the city of Apopka to reducing traffic deaths and severe injuries on city streets by fifty percent by the year twenty fifty. The recommended motion this evening is adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four nineteen. If you have any questions, Ms. Furon is here to answer them.
Any questions for? All good. Good, good, good. Okay, thank you.
This is on the website, though, right? The, all of this vision, so the public can see it because it's how many pages? Because I know I.
It's very long.
It's two hundred and eighty-three pages.
Yeah, the report is about eighty-five. All the appendix files are much longer. So we provided the report and a report plus appendix if you want to provide on the website.
So the only question I have is, we're going to vote it in, but is there a timetable? Like, you know, saying in the next five years, these are some of the things that we have listed in the vision zero that we are going to institute.
There's no specific timetable for each action, but the intention is all of the actions should be looked at to guide reaching that zero fatalities and serious injuries by twenty fifty. So there are some easier policy recommendations and then project ideas for areas that had high fatal and serious injury crashes. Obviously, implementing projects takes a long time. So the intention is to kind of provide this blueprint to consider in future projects and initiate new ones.
And this is with Metro Plan, is it?
Yeah, Metro Plan funded the study, and they're also doing a regional study for vision zero as well as I think twenty different cities are doing some more efforts.
Any other questions? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. So got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty. A resolution of the city of Apopka approving the acceptance and conveyance of certain parcels of real property from and to Central Florida Expressway Authority, approving the acceptance and conveyance of certain parcels of real property to and from BPG MidFlorida South One LLC, authorizing the mayor to execute special warranty deeds and documents to effectuate the conveyances contemplated herein, providing legislative findings, providing for severability conflicts, and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. So about a couple of years ago, the developer for MidFlorida South Logistics Park, it is an industrial project located west of State Road four twenty-nine and south of four forty-one, started to work with the city to explore ways to improve their site design options, particularly because they had an adjacent, oh, sorry. Apologies. Okay, they had this adjacent CFX stormwater pond to contend with at the time, which limited their site design layout a lot. So BPG MidFlorida South LLC, the developer, coordinated with the city to swap lands with CFX and created a larger buffer to the city's wildlife park on the south and eliminating their constraints on site design options. The city made the request to CFX, and in spirit of cooperation and partnership with the city, CFX agreed with the condition that the developer will design and convey a new stormwater pond for the road, which is now relocated on the southwest corner. You can see there the project site. It's also depicted on the major development plan approved by the city council on May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, as well as the construction site plan approved by the DRC on October sixth, twenty twenty-three. The developer will also be donating over twelve acres of wetland and upland to the city that I spoke about down in the south, and that will come in a future date as well. So the recommended motion tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, authorizing the mayor to execute special warranty deeds and documents to convey the lands from and to Central Florida Expressway Authority and MidFlorida South LLC.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Before we close this, I just want to, you know, I want a big shout out to Pam Richmond, who helped put this together, and if it weren't for our partners, good partners at CFX and MidFlorida, or Mid, excuse me, MidSouth, MidFlorida South.
MidFlorida Southeast.
This would have happened. And what's really cool about this is those twelve acres now give us twelve more acres or a better buffer on our seventy-acre birding park. So it's just, it's a win for everybody.
Correct.
And so I just want a big shout out to Pam and our friends at CFX and MidFlorida South. So with that, look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, city council reports. Commissioner Anderson, why don't you get us started?
So the first thing is really important is I'm really excited about the tentative agreement that was actually reached, the contract agreement between the Apopka Professional Firefighters Association, the union. I know that there was a lot of hard work and dedication that was put in between everyone. The union president, Alex, did a really great job representing the union, the attorneys involved, all the commissioners up here. I know we all were in a joint effort making sure that it was a lot of different variables that we weren't able to kind of discuss on a public platform. But just know that there are a lot of details within that. I'm very excited that we were able to reach that. So kudos to all of us collectively working together. And one of the things that I just want to express is that we all, most, we all went to the Florida League of Cities annual conference. We spent probably about four or five days there and meeting with different officials and different mayors and city commissioners. One of the things that I gathered is that we have to stand together. And what I mean by stand together is that we were voted to represent the community and our personal issues and who has issues with whomever. A lot of times, we lose focus on what's important. What's important is the residents. What's important is making sure that we are not too campaigning while we're sitting on the dais and that we're not looking for gotcha moments. And understanding that, me being an elected official, newly elected, I have the right, and if I didn't agree with something that was voted on prior to me being in this seat, I have a right to have a voice and say I don't agree with it. And everyone should respect everyone, even if we don't agree. And we are representing the community. And I'm just asking that we all work together, that we all, even if we don't agree, that we respect each other and that we're not condescending. And yes, this is a learning curve for me, but please understand that I go back and I spend hours reviewing everything. And to be condescending because I'm asking questions or because I disagree with previous votes is just not how we move the city forward. I mean, we are examples. And if we are being disrespectful to each other up here in the dais, then the community sees that, and they're going to come in and they're going to model that same behavior. So I'm asking us to be leaders of the community and making sure that we are working together, even if we don't agree with each other. We still have to respect each other. So I'm asking all of us to hold each other accountable and to respect each other, even if we don't agree with each other. There's a lot of things that were discussed, but I think that's one of my takeaways is that we need to work together. And we can't lose focus on who's important is the residents. And we fight, and when we are being disrespectful, we are losing sight on the residents. And we're spending time discussing things that is completely irrelevant. It is not helping. I got a call from a concerned, one of the students at Rock Springs, not Rock Springs, it was Wolf Lake Middle School. The child was in, could not get to school because it was dangerous walking conditions. And, you know, those are the things that we need to be fighting for and advocating for, not personal issues and attacks that has absolutely nothing to do with the cities. And what we usually do, a lot of times, we make it about the citizens, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the citizens. It's more so personal attacks. So I'm asking that we refocus our energy, we work together. If the attorney is able to find some type of workshop, so we can kind of come together and understand that how do we respectfully disagree? And let's just move this city forward. Let's do what's best for the residents. And I think that's what we was all elected for. So that's kind of all I have to say.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Velazquez.
Since we're on that subject, I will say this. I recently attended the League of Women Voters, and the hot topic was civil discourse, not civil, civil war. At the Florida League of Cities, I attended the courses that were citizen engagement, communicating the budget. There was one Unified Leadership Building Collaborative Council, and then there's building rapport, how to get along and not giving up. So you can see the topics that I seem to be going to. And obviously, it's a reflection of what's going on here. And of course, we had our last council meeting that really sort of kind of created a lot of chaos with shifting the public comment. You know, I wrote four emails to our city administrator. He did respond. And obviously, there was even an op-ed from the Apopka Voice. I just don't know who wrote it. Usually, they identify who did, but they didn't. And obviously, they're addressing, of course, what's going on with the public comment session. It doesn't say it.
It's Pat McGuffin, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
It was, it doesn't say that it was him. Usually, it does say it, but I didn't see it. If it was Pat McGuffin, I didn't see his name attached to it. Of course, we had the Apopka Voice the day after the fiasco with the shifting of the public comment and the cutting the live feed. I mean, it just goes on and on. And then we even had the Apopka Voice, who generated four different articles regarding public comments, you know, developing, sorry, public comments, not part of the city council live. Commissioner Nester rebuked the mayor Nelson for moving the public comments, turning off the live feed. And then it just goes on and on, and there's a lot of discontent from our public regarding the public comment. And so I will also say, yes, our responsibility is to be respectful with each other and that we work for our public and our constituents. Moving the public comment and shifting it the way we did only created more chaos, more anger, and more of a division. And I just feel it's not serving a good purpose for our public. If we feel, we honestly feel that they are important to us and we don't need to be kind of bickering up, I guess that's the word I've heard, among each other, we have to really put before us the public. And public comment is very important. It is very important to the public. They want to be able to, for us to hear, whether it's their concerns, their issues. And as that last council meeting, we had Mr. Pat McGuffin, who came up here and wanted to talk about, you know, the passing of Mr. Rickerson. That was lost. And I remember saying we cannot paint an entire, everyone who comes up to the public comment, we can't paint them all as being contentious and being disrespectful with us. So as the mayor did today, where he read what was his expectation of the public when they came up to speak, that is something that we need to do on a regular basis. But I really would like to have public comment brought back where we have always been, kind of presenting it in the agenda. But I will say this, because I did get emails, and I know Mr. Rod Olson, who is a regular here, he's not here, he's away. But what was interesting was in his letter, because he wrote me personally and I wrote him back, was that he made a reference in his, in his letter that said that he had had a meeting with our mayor, the chair, last year on April eleventh. last year on April eleventh, and that's how far back some of what's going on on the dais. We discussed a number of suggestions to help the city council meetings be more productive. The mayor made it clear that he was not willing to change his approach. So I don't, I don't know. If we're asking the commissioners to try and let's try and work together, then that would include the chair. And I think it's important that if we all commit to it, that it includes the chair. And I feel that the action that was taken at the last council meeting totally disrespected the council. We didn't have a say. I believed when Commissioner Nesta made the motion to move the public comment session, at that time, I believed it was moving it at that council meeting. Not that it would be a permanent, that we would keep our public comment session at the end of the meeting. It doesn't serve a purpose. I think it just continues to fuel anger and disenfranchising our public. I get it. I understand that sometimes our developers and other business of the city has to sit through public comment, but I feel that we have control of that. The chair has control of that. Today, I was happy to see that he read right before the meeting what his expectations was for our, our our public that's sitting here. So I'm asking to please bring back the public comment session where it belongs, which we have always done after presentations. And I don't believe that the vote that was taken was a permanent as forever. I believe that it was just done for that one meeting because it was, it was there when we started the meeting. So that's my concern with the public comments. I mean, there's been so much generated out there of how disenfranchise our public feels, how unhappy they're feeling. They are not happy with what we have done with the public comment session. So if, as you said, our responsibility and who we serve is the public. They have a voice, it matters. And we should be able to treat them with respect. And that is what I want. I would like for them, for public comment session to return to where it was. And that's all I have to say. I mean, I have a lot of comments here from and if you go on social media, it's even more. I'm just outlining what has been written on these medias from the Apopka Voice, from the Apopka Chief. And I just feel that it is addressing us as, as a council, as a commission that is here to serve the public. So I don't agree with putting the public comment session at the end. I think it, I, I know it disenfranchises our public. They have a right to have a voice and they have a right to speak to each of us. This is their only time, four minutes. It's not a lot. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith.
First of all, yes, I also attended the Florida League of Cities session in Hollywood, a lot of workshops, very beneficial information that was given out. Also, I'm excited the fact that we were able to come to an agreement with the firefighters and their contract. And so with those negotiations and want the firefighters to know that we love and appreciate all that they do and for the services they provide to our citizens here in the city of Apopka. And as you know, that workforce housing is a problem, an issue, not just in Apopka, but all over the state. And so I've been appointed to the advisory board for housing options for Orange County Public School teachers. So we will be meeting to come up with some strategies to see what we can do to assist those that are working for Orange County Public Schools in getting workforce housing.
Commissioner Nesta, you want to, you got something you're doing from here down there?
I gotta go to my list, thank you. I just want to apologize to our residents that are in, in the room. Obviously, it's very, very hot. I feel it's very strategic to push you guys out. So I appreciate everyone that has stayed to, to the public comment at the end. And I want to apologize for public comment being at the end. It's obviously again to just disenfranchise and push you guys out as much as possible. So we don't have to hear from you. And that was never my vote and I will continue to advocate and push this to what you, what all residents, I've had one consistent voice saying, bring it back to the beginning. That's what we want. So again, sorry for where we're at. I'm going to continue to work for, for what I've always promised. I will not be having office hours tomorrow, but continue to check my Facebook page for updates. Have any, any events that I may be doing or any updates and always feel free to reach out. I have any, any meetings or anything, any concerns you have, I'm always available. And then my last item is I was speaking to Main Street Apopka. Obviously, I've, ever since they, they've come into existence, they've just done incredible events and, and reach outs and engaging residents that normally wouldn't be engaged, which is very cool. And anytime people do something like that, I like to get behind them and just kind of push them as far as I can. So they've requested to do a presentation tonight and I have that available. So if the Main Street team would like to get up or whoever, Ms. Keshada, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I promise I'm going to make this very brief. I can talk and say a lot of words in a little bit of time. So I know there's been a lot of loose papers running around because we've had to regroup as an organization. So I wanted to give you all a great packet. So you have the official information of everything that is as most up to date as possible. So what is Main Street? Briefly, Main Street America leads an inclusive, impact-driven movement dedicated to re-energizing and strengthening older and historic downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts nationwide. Now, there's a really important factor with the Main Street program and that is the reinvestment ratio. Now, reinvestment ratio is basically for every dollar a community member or a council member or a donor puts into their Main Street program. What are, what is the community seeing back? Where is that reinvestment and how much of that money is getting back into the community? So in two thousand twenty-two, Main Street America did a survey of one thousand two hundred and fifty-three Main Street programs across the nation and reported a twenty-four dollar and seven cent to one dollar reinvestment ratio. So pretty impressive. And the way that it does this is through the Main Street approach. That's a four-point approach that leads to community transformation. This is basically a blueprint to bring your community, specifically your historic downtown and neighboring commercial districts into a transformative and revitalized state. So they do that through economic vitality, design, promotion and organization. We would look to partner with a whole bunch of people, pretty much everybody, to be honest. We would have obviously our national partners being Main Street America, ones where affiliate officially affiliated in that bracket. And also Main Street Florida, who is our regional, basically regional director of all Florida Main Street programs. We would have other regional partners like Orange County FDOT, obviously our local civic partners and the departments within the city of Apopka that we would most likely need to work with. And then we would have our local community partners and there's a whole, there's a whole list there and like I said, pretty much everybody we would want to work with. And then who benefits from a Main Street program? Again, pretty much everybody. We have a whole slew of lists of ways that most people will benefit from a Main Street program. The residents, the business and building owners and the landlords, the local and regional partners and the visitors of our town. Now, Main Street Apopka, as you can see, we've designed a new logo. This has four historic buildings on it. We have the seventy-two East Main Street building. That is the karate studio as it's known. That's the one right here on Park and Main. The building right there in the middle is on Gingy Breds. That's another historic building that we love. And of course, we love on Gingy Breds. We have the Masonic Lodge there to the, my right of that. And then we have, excuse me, we have the church just there. I believe it's down on Sixth Street. All great historic buildings. We felt like that was very inclusive of our history of who we are as Apopka. Our mission as Main Street Apopka is we are dedicated to building a strong foundation for downtown Apopka's economy through historic preservation, engaging partnerships and empowering our people. And our vision for downtown Apopka is to be the first choice for food, entertainment and shopping in the greater Apopka area. I know we've got a long way to go till we get there, but that's what we're shooting for. Now, I want to bring you back to when we started. We incorporated Main Street Apopka as a nonprofit organization back in May of two thousand twenty-three. We submitted our five oh one C three certificate application to the IRS in January of two thousand twenty-four. And we are still waiting on it, but they are reviewing applications that came in in December. So we're getting much closer. I believe by the time you all approve the budget, we will have our five oh one C three certificate. And now back then, we only had five people working on the team. In November, we added a sixth member. And then in the end, I would say it was the beginning of December, we had a total restructure of our team. So you can see there is, we have an executive board, an advisory board. And then we have committee members and myself, the staff. So if you look at this list and it's provided in your packets, you'll see there are business owners, both brick and mortar businesses and mobile businesses that are included in there. There are architects, designers, there are teachers, there, I think we even have a nurse. Yes, she is a registered nurse on our staff. We have a bunch of people that are now involved in this program. And that was a comment that you all made when I presented back in November, when I initially asked for the fifty thousand dollars of funding from you all, was you wanted to see more diversity in your board and more diversity in our team. And I believe we provided that. So our proposed work area, this has also been updated. Before, we were basically looking to cover the entire CRA. Well, after speaking at length with Florida Main Street, they basically told us, for one, it's not possible to do all of that space right away. And for two, you really want to focus on your commercial areas only, the commercial areas, so no residential and barely any industrial. And also, you really want to focus on where your historic presence is most. So we narrowed down the map that we want to work within and that is along OBT. And then it bridges off down Highland and then to Sixth Street and then up to Second Street, all the way to the left. We stop, we will stop at Marvin C. Zander's Avenue and Lake Avenue. And then it will go down central and then on Tenth Street. So that's where we've narrowed it down to. And we believe that's a true representation of where we are historically and where we've come from in the past. We have a great work plan. I'm not going to go through all of this, but for the general public, this will be available on our website. And then for you all, it's in your packet. But we're going to be working within that four-point approach. So our design committee, we have a design committee, a promotion committee, an economic vitality committee, and then an organization committee. Each committee has goals, timelines and the things that we need to capture in order to make those goals work. Again, this will all be available on the website. So at this point, I just want to reiterate, I know as we get closer to the budget, that my ask is still fifty thousand dollars. I realize we are a we are a line item in the budget and I really hope for the community's sake and for the sake of the health of our downtown that you take a chance on Main Street and take a chance on Apopka because our downtown deserves it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caitlin. I appreciate that. I don't have any questions or anything. Just I appreciate your time and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Jacob?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, just want to remind you that we are going to have a budget workshop next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth at five fifteen in this room. And that's for all of you to know as well. The purpose of that is to iron out any of these last minute things that we've talked about so we can have a balanced budget. That's all I have.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing? Okay, all right. Mayor's report, yeah, budget workshop. Just want to let everybody know, know it's early, but January first just happens to fall on the first Wednesday of the of the new year and we will not have a meeting on January first of two thousand twenty-five. I'm glad that, you know, we were able to come to a, you know, mutually agreed contract with the, the fire union. So we're happy to put that behind us. Looking forward to completing that that contract. Last thing, big, 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 big shout out to my rec team out there, stand-up guys. Y'all, we only got two of you? Well, anyway, they put together the TDT proposal, you know, for to get money from Orange County that we, you know, we've been paying in anywhere from five hundred thousand, no million dollars a year toward the hotel, the hotel tax. And so anyway, they put together an amazing PowerPoint, took it down to Orange County and were able to come back with the highest score of all of the applicants there for thirteen point five million dollars. That will be, we'll be adding four softball fields and we'll be doing some major improvements to the amphitheater to draw more paid concerts. So the team really, really put together best ever. And I guess I need to throw in IT because they helped put the, put the, the PowerPoint together. But it was a team effort and appreciate everything rattling your team and, and Rob and your team did to get us to the you know, so now we just got to do is got to push your commissioner, Commissioner Moore and the other commissioners in Orange County, make sure that this gets across the finish line. It goes to their, the TDT board first. And if, if then they approve it, then it goes to the Orange County Commission for final approval. So we're so excited about that. All right. Next up.